Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to today's special meeting of the Yountville Town Council for Monday, June 17th, 2019. We are meeting, it's a special meeting because we are meeting off of our regular Tuesday schedule. With that, I'll ask the town clerk for a roll call, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Doran Becker?
Here.
Councilmember Durham?
Here.
Councilmember Mohler?
Here.
Vice Mayor Dorman?
Here.
Mayor Dunbar?
Here. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next up is our agenda. We have some changes in order. We are going to propose that the, because of the noticing of the public hearing, item eight A is a time certain at 6:00 PM. We are going to hold that item until the end, and we will get to the other items, let's see, items nine A, nine B. Then we are going to move up item nine D, which is the appointments of zoning and design review board applicants. Then we will proceed with item nine C and nine E. And time permitting, we'll then move right into the public hearing. So with those changes, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Please vote. I'm sure we all said yes, even though only four are showing up.
Sorry, I'm having to refresh.
Are you saying yes?
Yes, I'm saying yes.
We all agree. Thank you. We'll move on to public comment. So items that are not on our recently mixed up agenda, if anyone would like to address the council, please do so. I believe we do have some guests in the audience, so, welcome.
Thank you. My name's Anthony Halsted. I'm here from the Napa County Library.
I'm Nicole Shields. I'm the branch services supervisor.
First off, I'll say thank you for inviting us to this meeting. Dennis Krymer isn't able to attend today. She had a prior commitment. She's on an interview panel all day long. So we had the privilege of coming and talking to you today about extension of hours at all four of the Napa County libraries, starting on July the first, but specifically the town of Yountville, where we'll be adding an additional day to our services. We'll be open, starting that next week on Friday. And then the other days of the week will be open with staff services from 10 until six on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, and then Friday, Saturday. So what we're doing is we're making each of the days that we're open more consistent start and stop time, and we're doing that at all four of the branches. The American Canyon and Calistoga branches will be open on Mondays beginning in July, and they've previously not been open on Mondays. And then the Napa County Library in Napa proper will be open on Sundays from 1 until 5. So that will mean that that location is open seven days a week, and we're really happy to be able to do that. It's been a long time coming with, I know a lot of involvement from various members of the council here, and us looking at our budget and trying to figure out ways to make that happen. And so we're appreciative of that opportunity and look forward to being open those additional hours. The volunteer component, you, all of you would know that we have historically been open for an additional two hours each night with volunteer hours. We'll be open now from, again, 10 until 6. So we're going to kind of take a look at that. If there's interest still from the community to be open that additional six to seven hour with volunteers, we'll certainly do that. And then also, we'll be looking at other volunteer opportunities within the library itself. So perhaps if that one hour isn't something that makes as much sense, then we'll work with those same interested residents to find other ways for them to work in the libraries, to be able to provide additional services during those open hours. So since I'm here and you're stuck for another whatever, I think I got five minutes, I'll mention a couple of things. Our Summer Library Adventure, which is a renaming of the Summer Reading Club that we have had for many years, Yountville has a lot of participants in that during the summer months. I want to remind everybody that it's not just a program for children. It's also for teens and adults. And this year, we're counting time spent reading instead of books read, and that will level the playing field for kids of all ages and parents to read. So if you have a younger child where you can read 50 picture books in a week, and an older child that maybe makes it only through two or three novels in a summer, they'll feel like they're having the same participation, and they'll get the same sort of acknowledgement and support from the library. And then for adults to help encourage them to participate for all of the residents in all four locations that complete the Summer Library Adventure, when they turn in that final log with 20 hours of having read, listened to, come to a program, anything that's library related, there are two organizations that will be donating a book for the first pediatrician for any, first pediatrician visit for any child born in Napa County. So it's called a Third Week Book. Typically, children are born and they have that first doctor visit three weeks in. So we're really happy to be able to have worked with a couple of different groups to help fund that for the next two years. So I encourage all adults to participate as well. People often wonder why adults would, but it's an opportunity for families to read together at all ages, and for the children and teens to see their adults participating as well, sort of feel that bonding. And then when you're reading to a child, both of those times count. So we really want to encourage people to participate. And then a reminder, one last thing then, fines. Last year, at about this time, we got rid of fines for teen materials and children's materials to help encourage all residents and families to come and use the library. So we've really seen a huge amount of additional use by children and teens, because previously they might have had fines that they wouldn't have been responsible for. They'd have parents like me who can't remember to bring their stuff back to the library on time, and now they won't have to worry about that, and they can come and make use of our resources. So.
Hey.
Any questions?
Is there anything else you want to add?
No.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
What he said?
Yeah, what he said.
Any questions or comments from council? Councilmember Doran Becker?
I'm just delighted with this change, and thank you, and thank you to our ad hoc committee who worked hard on the, on the conversation, so.
Thank you very much.
I know, and we've, we've addressed this every budget workshop that we've been dealing with over these last several years. So it's, I know, a relief for all of us to feel like we're all on the same, do I say it? Same page?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you.
Well, we, you know, it never hurts to have new staff analysts at the county level, the CEO's office, as well as our own staff analysts, to say, look at our budget, look at everything in a completely new way, and try to figure out how to do things that we might have thought weren't possible before. And then they came back internally, and also with various members of the library commission, and then different cities and towns to help us make the most of our tax revenue, and to ensure that the dollars that we receive in that then go back out to the community. So we're, we're equally happy, I'm sure, to be able to offer that.
Great. Well, thank you for being here and representing the entire network and get to reading this summer.
Thank you so much.
Thanks very much.
Bye.
Anyone else like to address the council on something that's not on our agenda? Seeing no one moving forward, we'll go on to our consent calendar, which is items A, B, and C. Is there any question or is there a motion on the consent calendar?
I move that we approve the consent calendar, items A, B, and C.
Second.
Thank you. Please vote. That is unanimous passage. Thank you very much. We have no presentations. We are going to skip until 6:00 PM the public hearing. So we will move now to item nine A, report on capital improvement program. Joe?
Thank you very much, Mayor Dunbar, members of the council. It's our pleasure tonight, after nearly six months of work, to present for your consideration adoption of a resolution to approve the town's five-year capital improvement program for the fiscal years 2019-20 through 2023-2024. This year, this has been before the council and other bodies, but I think this is the third or fourth iteration and presentation that we made on the capital improvement program, including Parks and Rec and two separate workshops for the budget. So this year's total FY 1920 budget, fiscal year 1920 budget, is approximately 3.2 million. 2.7 million of that is directly associated with funding projects, both general fund, special revenue fund, and enterprise fund projects. Some of the notable projects for this year are the new pedestrian bridge and path from Oak Circle to Mission. That's primarily grant funded. Some staff time and some of the design will be used to provide the matching funds that we need for this grant. We expect to go under construction sometime before the end of next FY, and that project will take approximately six months once we go under construction. We're currently just about finished with the environmental reports, and we will bring that back to you at some time in the near future for your consideration. We also will have the annual street maintenance program. That will be funded out of Measure T. We're estimating conservatively about $550,000 of Measure T funds will be available this year. So we're also going to try, we're in the process of design and engineering for a small microservicing program in the fall of this year, and then the major paving project in the Oak Circle neighborhood in the spring of next year, similar to what we did this year out on Yount Street. We also will be doing some enterprise fund work. So the inflow and infiltration reduction program in our collection system will continue. As you are all aware, these programs are associated with improvements in our collection system, and it is a condition of our NPDES permit through the State Regional Water Quality Control Board. That's part of our permit condition, and that permit is updated and negotiated every five years. We're coming up on that again shortly, so we'll go into negotiations with them in a very short time. There's also funding set aside for our replacement and reserve funds, so funds 81 and 82, the facility repair and replacement fund, that's fund 81, will include a $204,000 allotment allocation, and the fleet tools and equipment fund, fund 81, will get an $81,000 allocation to begin and continue building funds for those programs. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have on the CIP budget or the resolution that is attached to the budget.
Thank you. Any questions to the staff report? Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Thank you, Director Tagliabashi. One of the, there was a $100,000 item for, excuse me, of feasible, affordable and workforce housing feasibility study. And the conversation that I had with you today was quite enlightening for me. Could you briefly share how it is that that feasibility study can include things like law enforcement, fire services, just sort of the scope of what we need in a feasibility study to support affordable housing?
Sure. I'm sure the town manager's going to chime in as well. But I think what we heard from the council when we created this fund for this year's upcoming budget was to make the program broad so that we could include a variety of feasibility studies, should they be required, primarily at the vet's home, but other studies as well. I think it's important to realize that there's a range of studies that go into these, to these decisions. So it's not just water and wastewater and the demand or the service, services that we expend for those two enterprise fund, those two types of enterprise funds. There's a range of public services. So whether you're considering the fire services' ability to respond and the timeliness of that, the police services that we have, public safety services that we have, and what it means, the impact that it could have on them. Public transportation, there could be some grant funding involved if we, if the, if the development is close enough to public transportation, that triggers some potential funding or decisions. Streets have to be wide enough, have enough complete streets, needs to be considered. So there's a wide range of public services that need to be considered when we talk about any of these feasibility studies. So I think some people assume, and rightly so, that it's just water and wastewater. There are a portfolio of services that we offer that we need to consider before we make a recommendation to you all about how to spend some of that Measure S money in helping people develop workforce housing. Town manager may have additional comments.
The only other comment I would add is that within the community, we also have another area of potential. And again, this is a placeholder at the council's discretion, using Measure S funds to support housing. For example, at the property at the south end of town, we may have to look at how to make the site feasible for housing, knowing that it has flooding capacity. So the sites are variable, and the feasibility study ultimately will depend on what the regulatory agency or SEQA analysis. See, we're more comfortable on the stuff within the town limits proper under SEQA, but if it comes to the veterans' home property, we need to make sure that we have some resources to help whatever regulatory compliance may come out of the state agencies' approval. So at this point, the $100,000 is also a placeholder, and when we have a better understanding of what may be required, and I also want to remind you all that Planning Director Liston talked about us applying for a grant to also help us with housing feasibility. So if we are fortunate to get the grant, we will spend the grant first and then potentially augment with, and again, this is restricted fund. The feasibility money is coming from your Measure S, which is restricted only to affordable and workforce housing programs and initiatives.
There will be, I believe, if the governor's budget passes, along with some other bills, as written right now, I'm looking at some of my notes from league conversations, $250 million in planning for development, that's statewide, of course, and then there's also some money specifically for affordable workforce housing. So we'll be leveraging the money that we're committing with some of those other sources. Great. Any other questions to the staff report? Any member of the public want to ask about the capital improvement program? Okay, seeing none, we'll return to discuss or take action by the council. We have had several conversations about the details of this, so it's not like we're not drilling down on the specifics, but we have spent several meetings doing that very thing. In that case, is there a motion to be had?
I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution Number 19-3565, approving the town's five-year capital improvement program for fiscal years 2019 to 2020 through 2023 to 2024.
Do we need to add that part about the consistency?
And determine the consistency of the capital improvement program with the general plan.
Second.
Okay. With that, please cast your vote. That passes unanimously. Thank you. Joe, thank you very much for all the work to get to this point.
Thank you very much, Mayor and council. Appreciate it.
Okay, next, our 2019-20 operating budget.
Thank you, Mayor, council. I'm going to be relatively brief, because as many of you know, the budget process is a multifaceted, many-hour process in which we are currently now wrapping up a number of workshops, budget hearings. But I will share with you some key elements. The budget began in January of 19, January of 2019, excuse me, yeah, 2019, with the planning discussion, analysis, financial projections. On February 5th, we worked on budget parameters and understandings and approaches to how to build the budget. And then we've worked on the budget consistent with those directions from the council. And then recently, we've had two half-day budget workshop sessions going over the details. And I want to share with you a few of the highlights. The general fund, including enterprise funds, special revenue funds, capital projects, and debt service, is $19,58,294. And that's what we consider an all-funds budget. That's all of the things that the council ultimately is responsible for. General fund revenue is actually $11,263. And the three most consistent sources of revenue, as we all know, are our transient occupancy tax, number one, which is budgeted for this year at $7 million, which equates to 62% of our budget. I want you to remember that, because there will be a quick question I always share with the council. The next largest source is, for the general fund, is our sales tax budgeted at $1,377, which is a small $37,000 increase based on our current trending. And again, 70% of our sales tax is derived from restaurant. So again, mostly paid for by visitors. Now I'm going to talk about what we pay for. And by "we," I mean the residents and the businesses that pay property tax. Property tax accounts to 14% of our general fund revenue and is projected at $1,593,000, just approximately $100,000 increase. And then we have some miscellaneous revenue from park and recreation fees, programs, planning application, and fees that are paid by the individual users. The reason I point out the property tax generation at $1,593,000 is that the, what we truly pay locally does not pay for our public safety contract costs, when you add up the cost of the sheriff contract and our law and, and our fire emergency medical contract. We have a very unique budget, and our funding source is principally paid for by visitors. And we're very unique in how a composition of our funding structure is comprised. Expenditures are projected at $9,381,000, and 60% of this is attributed to public safety, public works, parks, and recreation, with 40% attributed to finance, planning, and administrative support structures and risk management. So one of the things we want to talk a little bit about, as you know, we've included some new funds this year. We've already mentioned Measure S. Measure S is the voter-approved initiative that provides affordable and workforce housing fund. We have the state-required CAS certification and training fund regarding the disability access fee. We've restructured the emergency reserve fund, and we are exceeding the minimum of 20% as established by the council. The revenue stabilization reserve fund has a minimum target of 25%, and we're exceeding that at 29%. And the general fund budget includes reserves for insurance and claims retention, budget contingencies, legal contingencies. The enterprise fund is operating per the five-year utility rate structure. We will have some drawdown. I've cautioned you all that water continues to be of concern, especially given the current, a year where we have a significant situation where we've been purchasing water from the city of Napa when rector reservoir water has not been available. So with that, that's sort of the, some of the highlights. I'm happy to go into more detail, but you have a fairly detailed staff report and budget message and about 18 hours of workshop. So happy to answer any questions you might have, or if there's concerns about the structure of the budget.
Thank you. Are there any questions about the presentation of the budget? As the town manager pointed out, we've been talking about this for many, many hours and many meetings. So again, while it may appear that we're spending a short amount of time today, it's been extensive to get to this point. Want to congratulate all of our departments, the heads, as well as the rest of the staff, for another balanced budget and a great allocation of resources where we need them most. So thank you to all of you that have helped us get to this point. Any member of the public like to talk about this item? Seeing no one coming forward, further discussion or action by the council? Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I'd just like to make a comment or two. First, yes, thank you to the staff for all First, yes, thank you to the staff for all the work you did on this budget and for all the work you do to make it work. And just a small case in point, one of the things in our capital improvement plan is new light poles and lights. We buy the poles, our folks on our payroll put them up. We don't contract that out, and that's an unusual situation, and that's what I mean by working to make it work. We do have, we're very fortunate, we have money to bring services and to bring employees to support those services. But we also look and we're always planning ahead, we're always trying to bank money where we can within legal limitations. This year, the 25% that the town manager talked about, that was up to 25%. This year, we're changing it to 25% or more. So we are looking forward to the reserve. And I'm sort of channeling Councilmember Durham here when I say the budget is year-round. It is something we're always thinking about, we're always planning for, we're always looking at. It's gratifying to see some folks here tonight to hear about it. But you can come to any meeting, you can talk to us during public comment about the budget, you can talk to us if there's a contract, because all these projects tonight will come forward, most of them as separate contracts. Please feel free to come and tell us what you think. If you think of a way that we could work smarter or some other way to do things. But I'm very proud of the budget as it lays out before us today, and I really do appreciate the staff and my fellow council members' work on it.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mueller?
I just wanted to make a general comment about our TOT tax. As the town manager reported, it is 62% of our general fund reserve. I'm quite impressed by this number because it wasn't that long ago, it was 80%. And 80% sounds more than 62%, but what that meant was that we relied even more heavily not that long ago on every dollar that we got from the hotels. So now at 62%, I'm much more comfortable because we're more diversified, we have more revenue streams, and the reliance is 20% less on our total funds for, based on our TOT. So we're moving in the right direction. I think that makes me feel a lot more comfortable. So just wanted to make that comment. Good job, everybody, and thanks for all the hard work that went into this budget.
Thank you. Any other comments? If there are none, is there a motion to be had? Anyone?
My buttons aren't buttoning.
I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution Number 19-3566, adopting the 2019-20 operating budget appropriation, GAN limit for fiscal year 2019-20, salary ranges and existing fiscal policies, general finance policy, town investment policy, use of long-term debt policy, OPEB trust investment policy, fund policy, utility enterprise rate policy, use of dry reserve, water reserve policy.
Thank you.
Second.
It's a lot easier to second it than to first it. Okay, please cast your ballot. That does pass unanimously. Just again, recognizing everyone that made this work out so well, we are, as the vice mayor just stated, very proud of the fund balances, reserves that we are able to continue to put in place and in some cases make even stronger so that we can prepare for the future, future councils, as well as any issues that come up that might impact our revenue stream. So yes, Councilwoman Dornbecker?
I would also like to thank our staff, including Eddie Gomez and Priya Nixon and Celia King for their efforts, and I want to salute them. They've done an excellent job. Thank you.
Anything else? No. So we have a budget for next year. That's good news. Okay. Moving on, we, as stated earlier, we are going to skip over Item 9C, the ordinance update, zoning and design ordinance update. We're next going to go to 9D, which is the outcome of the interviews and appointments to zoning and design review board openings.
Thank you, Mayor. Town council interviewed two of three applicants earlier this evening and have unanimously recommended Kim Cook and Michael Zagorsak for reappointment to the ZDRB. And then we will coordinate with the third and possible other applicant for another meeting date to get that third position appointed.
We did notice that it looks like there was a misunderstanding about the timing of the interview. Mr. Jordan showed up just as we were starting our regular, our special meeting here. So I look forward to having that interview with him. So you're prepared for a vote on Kim Cook and Michael Zagorsak?
Yes.
For two of the three vacancies?
Yes.
At this time?
Yes, with a term of office to commence July 20th, 19, and expire July 19th, 2022.
Is there a motion to that effect?
I make a motion that we approve the appointment of, or the reappointment of Kim Cook and Michael Zagorsak to the zoning and design review board with a term of office to commence July 21st, 2019, and expire July 21st, 2022.
Second.
July 20, July 21st, 2022 is expired.
Oh, we have two different things here in the title and in the action. Whatever the appropriate term is, Michelle will get it right.
Okay.
It's just two different things. Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Please vote. That passes unanimously. We wouldn't want to shortchange them in two days.
No, not at all.
All right, thank you for that. We are now going to move back to Item 9C, zoning and design ordinance update.
Good afternoon.
Yes.
So the staff report before you tonight describes what we're going to do now that the general plan has been adopted. And the town's general plan was adopted in May of this year, and that general plan establishes the broader policies of the town for use and development, and it sets the community's vision for really a long-term period of time. The zoning ordinance is what implements the general plan, and it sets the specific development standards that will be followed, and it provides really the, all the details of all those more broad policies in the general plan. And I've outlined in the, on the first page of the staff report, how the town is required under state law to amend its zoning and design ordinances within a reasonable period of time following adoption of the general plan. And so that is the effort that we are now embarking on. We have entered into a contract with Christine O'Rourke and Associates to assist us in this manner, matter, and she assisted us with the town's climate action plan, and she also was a primary drafter of the general plan. The reason that we're looking at a consultant to help us with this effort is because of the town's lean staffing model and the fact that we need to have this updated within a reasonable period of time. By working with a consultant who is really an extension of staff and works at our direction and that of the council as to the timeline and the procedure and to the content of the update, they can help us do it in what we hope is a year period. And in the staff report, we've grouped the different, grouped different priorities for the update of this general plan. And in the first priority, we've identified the change areas. And the change areas of the general plan are really the significant land use changes and what can be done differently from what is being done now. You know, those relate to development in the downtown core, North Washington, and then also the Humboldt parcels, and those three are included in this update. We've also included the rezone of the Hotel Yountville parcel that was already approved by the town council. We just hadn't yet updated the general plan, so this is a cleanup effort. And we're also proposing to pre-zone Domain Chandon based on discussions on potential annexation, and that's an important step to have in place should we ever move forward with the, with annexation. The reason that these are grouped as first priority are because they are the changes from the general plan. And so if we receive a development application in any of these change areas, it's important that we address it first. They're also grouped in the first priority because they were the discussion, a detailed discussion during the general plan updates. We know board and commission and council direction on this, as well as the community, and all those details are included in the general plan. So we feel like we can move forward and bring something to you for review. The second priority are items that we've heard are really important from the community and that there are things that we should look, look at modifying in the near future. These have to do with home-based businesses and how are those allowed and how are they, how are different tiers created, about possibly amending view corridors and establishing new ones, simply the towns rules on parking and how we can get more creative while ensuring that the town's aesthetic is maintained. Some of the other items are to establish good neighbor practices for businesses that have residential areas, and then to maintain and update the town's architectural design standards. We know this is so important because the specifics of the zoning and design ordinance really drive development, and they're, those have been subjective in the past, those have been conflicting with different provisions of the plan and haven't always resulted in the type of development that is Yount, that Yountville has sought. So this is the second group of priorities. These are things that are less well-defined than the first priority group, and there will be more input and feedback and work sessions on these before we start drafting them. The third group, priority group, are really for a lot of the larger items that we see out of the general plan, to update the sign ordinance, to consider updating the lighting ordinance, to update the parkland dedication ordinance consistent with the new standard that we've established, to amend the temporary structural ordinance to allow pop-ups for retail. And then this idea of simplifying and consolidating the zoning and design ordinances, which is something other communities do, makes the document easier to read and less likely to misinformation. It's easy for the public, for developers, for homeowners. And so we've sort of tentatively grouped them into these three priority areas based on how we know the community feels and how much input is needed before moving forward. In the staff report, I indicate that the second and third priority items, we really have less direction and detail included in the general plan. So for these items, the idea is that we will hold work sessions with the town council, with the ZDRB, to discuss items of interest, to get input and direction before we start the drafting effort. Later on, there will be workshops to consider first drafts of these items, I'm going to provide feedback, and then it will go through a more typical process of stops before the ZDRB and council in these different groupings of policies and ordinances that we wish to bring before you. So that's sort of a broad overview of what we are hoping to do over the next year. We are having the kickoff meeting with our consultant on Thursday of next week, when we'll be doing a tour of town and trying to establish a work plan. So tonight, we're really looking to you for your input and feedback on how you'd like to see this process work, when you'd like to see items come before you. We just want to hear how we can structure this process right from the start in order to move forward, so.
You mean it didn't wrap up with the general plan adoption? I thought it was over.
Right. Michael Zagorsak had a fun comment earlier tonight that the end of one thing is just the beginning of another, and that's where we're at on this.
Okay. Questions on the staff report? Anyone from the council? Vice Mayor?
Thank you, and thank you, Director Liston. So just to clarify, the consultant, O'Rourke and Associates, I think we have a not-to-exceed $100,000 contract with them, correct?
Yes.
And they are going to deliver for that figure a turnkey, done deal, revised, amended zoning ordinances, design ordinances, and the plans that support, the implementation plans that support the general plan.
Yes. So we're looking at this contract, and they are looking at all of the provisions of the general plan, all of the existing parts of the code, and the goal is to make that consistent and to have a workable zoning and design ordinance that accepts all those changes. Yes.
And that $100,000 is, we're actually able to carry those funds over from this fiscal year to the next, correct?
Correct, yes.
And what, have they done a project like this? Have they revamped and rewritten design and zoning ordinances?
Yes, they've done this in Novato. Christine O'Rourke's partner is Rob Brown, a community development director with over 40 years' experience, who's been writing ordinances, updating ordinances, and yes, there's lots of experience.
And then the bullets under priority one, the first and second bullets, incentive-based program for third-story bonus, and, okay, I see. So the first one is the west side. I mean, do those fit together, the first two?
Yes, yes.
Or are they the same? Are we talking about the same change area? Do both of those bullets go to the, what I call the three-story change area?
Yes, they both go toward the west side of Washington Street in that limited area.
Okay, but they are discrete projects or discrete pieces of the same project?
Right. One addresses an incentive program for the third story that provides a community benefit, the other is looking at FAR for those types of community uses. So they, they all come to play together to create those standards.
And the, did I understand you correctly that you, at least at this point, don't feel that you need to hear from council or ZDRB to begin actually drafting the regulations supporting the first priority items?
Given that so much detail is included in the general plan and we're able to sort out what was not desired and what is desired, yes.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Dornbecker?
Yes, thank you, Sandra, and thank you for, you've done so much work on the general plan update. Thank you. Based on the general plan update, and you reminded me, I was on the Climate Action Plan Committee when Christine O'Rourke was our facilitator for that. Will the conclusions that we reached for the Climate Action Plan be also then included in the ordinance rewrites?
Not necessarily, because that is a standalone document, the Climate Action Plan. Where it relates to specific development standards, yes, they will be included in the zoning ordinance, but we have different levels of policy and documents that guide development, with the general plan being the highest and the zoning ordinance sitting below it. And then more of the specific plans, like a Climate Action Plan, help inform those as well.
Okay, thank you.
So to build on that question, something like building materials, water usage, those types of things that would be in a Climate Action Plan potentially could carry over, would that be an example of how it would carry over? And there are some other things that maybe are more environmental that aren't attached to an individual project, whether it's air quality, water usage is kind of a general, so those types of things would?
Yes.
Help define that? Okay, good question. These bullet items don't have priorities within the categories, correct?
No.
Right.
And these are just loose groupings too, that, and there's opportunity to change it still.
Right. Any other questions from council? I'm kind of assuming that we need the consultant's recommendation on timing and prioritization of the individual elements here. Assuming I'm correct about that, do we have a timeline for when we might hear something from them to get a better sense of, okay, priority amendments, you know, the top priorities, we can expect to see language in the next X number of months? Do we have anything like that yet, or is it just too premature?
Too premature. So once we establish the priorities, we'll establish the work plan and the timeline for working through those.
Okay.
We'll get a better understanding just a week from Thursday when we have that first meeting with them to understand how we'll structure it and stay on track, really.
Great. Any member of the public? Or Steve, do you have something first?
Well, I just want to stress one thing Sandra said, that I don't want to be lost, Vice Mayor, on your comment, because one of the concerns we have is we're trying to share the process so that you're aware, but if there's a process change you're interested in or different, we also need to know about that. Because one of the things that will affect the timeliness of the deliverable is the process. So if the process has different stages, I mean, we just need to know, we're anticipating a regular update to the council coming from Sandra and I, but we also wanted to stress that, you know, the commitment we're making is that the information is going to the ZDRB. That's going to take some feedback, input, and then it's coming back to the council. So it's a multifaceted process. But if there's ideas, if something's not right, what we're trying to do is figure out a process recognizing that this is significant, that the council's comfortable with, and also something that if we need to adjust in midstream, then we can't. But I mean, that's what we're looking for. There isn't any one master way to do this. There isn't any one master way to do this, and I think it's important that the community recognize that Sandra, the town attorney, and myself are not turning these over turnkey, per se, because I don't agree with that. So I will say that that is not exactly what we're doing. This work is an extension of staff because of our limited staffing model in terms of positions. The other approach would have been to hire staff and do it, and we're choosing a hybrid model because we think it's more cost-effective, and in this particular case, the consulting team had worked on the general plan, so we don't pay significantly for orientation. But I also want to let you know that, you know, we anticipate, we have a regular workload. You know, the planning department is, we're anticipating receiving applications that will need timely processing during the course, the normal ZDRB activity. So I just kind of want to make sure, we're looking at this, and how do we make sure that the council's input, and Sandra said that, we want to get it right from the start. So if there's some things you want us to do different from the start, we need to know that, and then we can modify and go forward.
Thank you. Any member of the public want to comment on this item? Okay, we'll continue discussion or recommendation by the council. I frankly think that we're a little bit premature to start drilling down on moving things around. I think it's right that you have grouped these categories based on the two years and almost countless hours of meetings with the general plan process. These kind of, to me, fit neatly in the priority areas as defined that way, and I think as the town manager just described, this will be a very, very much a living document that will be modified, similar to what we do with the capital improvement program as we go. We can take something from a second or third tier and put it in the first tier if we feel like it needs to be prioritized that way, so. Further comments from the council? Councilwoman Doran Becker?
I, I agree that, I feel like it's a little premature. We don't want to have to tell you a deadline for when we want a, a report or anything, so it, it's a, it's a process. I, I think it, I do like, as the mayor said, that the priorities, the three different priorities, and if we see as we go along something that needs to be bumped up or bumped down, we, we could weigh in on it then, but thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilmember Mueller?
Well, I think you laid out nicely. I, too, don't have any changes in the priorities. I was just wanting a little more detail on, because the six bullet points in the first priority items, those are all pretty big. So can you give us some sense, or is that still something you need to kind of work through? What's your anticipation of frequency as you're working through these that you would probably come to us? Because like, for example, the three-story, there was a lot of discussion in the town, between us and all of that. Do you anticipate it would, you'd come with just an early draft to kind of just get our sense, or would you want to really kind of flush it out and have a bigger picture? And would you have more than just that one bullet point? Just some thoughts on frequency and how you might go about that process?
I think it's possible with the first priority grouping to lump it together and get started on the work, to take it, and that's where we have an opportunity to come first to council for feedback, before we make modifications, to take it to ZDRB, and then back to council. It could be as simple as a two- or three-step process for this first group. On the later ones, it will be a more involved process where we have study sessions to get feedback, and then we'll start to draft it, and then we'll come back before you to get feedback on that, and that might happen one or two times to, in order to really devise the content and the specifics that we want. So it will change based on where we're at in these priority groupings and how confident we feel with the detail we already have, or whether we're coming out to you with questions. And then even in the most simple of processes, we're looking at ZDRB and council, and potentially council, the ZDRB, and then back to council, outside of the study session model, which adds two to four more meetings in itself. But I think it would be nice to tackle a whole group of items, to bring before you to look at, so we're looking at these in sort of larger content groups. If that, if we find that that is too much, too overwhelming, we can break it down into smaller ones, and then if that were to happen, I think we're looking at greater than a year, just the number of meetings that we have in order to, to tackle everything, so.
And then one other question, you're going to be merging some of the ordinances with some of the more design standards. Are you going to do that in the same priority, or are you going to wait till it's all done and then?
Yeah, we have that listed as, well, it's sort of, it flows between priority two and priority three. It's the last priority of two and the first of priority three. And so it's just, it's simply part of the ongoing effort to tighten up and improve our design standards and then to incorporate those into the zoning ordinance.
And then one last question for approval, are we going to do that in segments, or, okay, we're not going to wait till the end and like keep what we have now as the gospel and then wait till this is all done? So we're going to merge as we go?
Yeah, I think it makes sense to attack it in chunks and adopt it as we're comfortable with it.
Okay, great. I'm fine with that plan. Hopefully, we can get it done in a year to be-
I know.
Start the clock ticking.
I think, looking at that last bullet in section two, it might be an example of how we will need to modify or even merge the efforts with even the first priority. I look at the rezoning of the vacant residential parcels on Humboldt and Jefferson. If actual projects come forward, we're going to need to then jump to this item in the second category about reviewing architectural design standards, compatibility, et cetera. So there's going to be some merging of those categories naturally, I think.
Yes.
Right. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. On the priority one change area, I, I think I'm kind of in the same place as Councilmember Mueller, and that is, I'm harkening back to one of our early general plan workshops where we all thought we were on the same page, but then it turned out we kind of were not on the same page. So I would like to see some sort of process where the consultants and, and our staff and our attorney all get together and say, okay, for the first priority amendments, here are the bullet points we want to put into an ordinance. Here's how we see the picture is going to look, and come to council before you actually write it, so that if there's some disconnect, or if there's something where we're not together on the same page, I think it will help the timeline, because you won't have spent the time actually writing an ordinance. We'll just be able to say, okay, yes, this is what we want to see in the ordinance. So that would just be my tweak to the process.
Where would you suggest the zoning and design review board fits into that process?
I, I think maybe you could, we could have a joint meeting and talk about it, maybe, a, a workshop, but just to make sure, when you talk about how we're all going to start, I, I think that is the start, but it also is the major pieces of our general plan amendments, and I just want to make sure we're all coming out of the gate on the same page.
Other feedback from council? I do think that, you know, with that feedback, we could talk to our consultant and really get a more structured plan in place, and then just come back to us as you have new information. Steve, is there anything else you wanted to add to this?
Yep. I just think, I want to make it really clear that, as you're alluding to this, this is an aggressive timetable, and it is going to require additional meetings to accomplish the input, and that's not a bad thing. I'm just going to need your support, because we may either need to incorporate them into the council meeting flow, or we may need a couple additional, especially the, the joint meetings. So that's my only caveat, is again, trying to do it the right way and getting the input, I think is critical, but it is going to have more meetings.
I see workshops and ad hoc committees in our future, Steve, and in our present. All right, any last comments? Seeing none? Loose direction from us, hopefully good enough? All right, thank you. Okay, now we're going to jump back over to our last administrative item, item nine E, which is our town council protocols update. And just as a reminder, in case some folks got in late, we have a public hearing related to the Justice Sellers Use Permit Amendment that is a time-specific 6:00 PM. We can't start that prior to 6:00 PM. We'll have this other discussion, and then if we finish this discussion and the rest of our items, other than that one hearing, we will take a brief recess until 6:00 PM. I also want to recognize that the vice mayor is going to potentially be leaving here momentarily, because we do have a conflicting meeting scheduled tonight. Some of you may be aware that the Napa Unified School District is holding a meeting for discussion on their financial situation and how it impacts the four small schools that are in their district, one of them being Yountville Elementary School. So the vice mayor is going to go represent our council to be there for the beginning of that meeting, which is 6:00 PM, and there are a few of us that are going to be leaving as soon as we finish this meeting and go down there, and hopefully you'll have seats for us. All right, so thank you very much.
Mayor, at risk of being out of order, given the fact that the next item is the discussion of the town pro, town council protocols, I'm going to suggest that we defer this until a date when all five of you are able to participate.
So what I would suggest, we have forty-five minute, forty-seven minutes that we have now, the vice mayor just gave me a question to ask about this. My guess is we're not going to finish this conversation, but we could certainly have some of it.
I'm just, my only concern is making sure that the council members have the opportunity to participate, so if, if there's something there, it's just, you know, that's where I'm coming from, is.
Understood. So I think we can start this conversation, we'll certainly include the vice mayor in before we, we finish, and also there'll be the ability to have her and anyone else watch the playback of this meeting to, to get caught up on the conversation. So with that, I think, let me get to the right item here. So Steve, are you kicking this off?
I can.
Or Michelle?
I'll let Michelle. I will point out, first of all, just for background, as the council may recall, this update and review process of the protocols has been going on for almost approaching a year-plus. We did a check-in earlier, and then we did a check-in at the annual planning retreat, and then there was some areas that consensus, and then the council had a small number of areas that they felt needed more discussion, and established an ad hoc committee comprised of council member Mueller and the mayor, and then Michelle, the town clerk, myself, and the town attorney have been working on a number of things, and this reflects that current conversation, which also means that for, to, the mayor and council member Mueller are heavily involved, and having seen thirteen, fourteen variations of this document and various edits, some of the other council is seeing it for the first time, so we do anticipate that there may be some questions as to how or why. But I did want to point out that this particular, the ad hoc committee has been at work on this for quite a bit, a, a number of hours, so that's just the preface for where to start, and I think Michelle's prepared to kind of walk us through the document. And again, we can work through the document based on the prioritization of the council.
Well, let's start with, if there are any kind of big-picture questions, as the council has had a chance to digest this red-line version, are there any items that really kind of stand out for questions or comment, or should we try to work our way through this?
No questions.
No?
No questions.
Okay, off to a great start.
We did a great job.
That's it. Can't be improved at this point.
There can't be another red line.
There's probably nothing worse than an audience that's sitting here waiting for us to talk about protocols, and we've got this massive red-line document in front of us, and you're just looking at us like, what are you talking about? So we'll try to be as clear and explicit as possible and not take up necessarily the entire forty-five minutes we have. So let me just, before, I don't want to forget, the vice mayor's question has to do with communications, so I'm trying to see in what section of, probably section ten, ten-point-six, possibly on page thirty-nine. Her question, what is the plan for when the press calls a council member to make a comment on behalf of the town? I know we have some language about official communications and working through the town manager or the mayor.
Ten-point-six.
So looking for ten-point-six, hopefully that's the right section. We pretty much rewrote that entire section.
You're correct. It's official town communications, ten-point-six.
Can't quite hear you.
Pardon me. Ten-point-six, you're correct.
Is there any more-
Page thirty-eight in my heart.
-detail about ten-point-six that we're going to talk about? Or is it just, talk about it?
Well, I think that was one of the categories with the most interest. Often, we are contacted individually, whether it be by members of the media, the public, or other interested parties, and we are trying to make sure that we speak appropriately and accurately and have a plan in place. So certainly, the council, each individual member has the right to free speech and to respond when contacted, but for what we're calling the official town communication, that there's a protocol in place, that press releases, anything of that nature, outreach on social media, nextdoor.com, that type of thing, has a process. And so I believe on page thirty-nine of, I don't know if it's the same, page thirty-nine of the digital copy towards the top in black, when reporters seek information that requires interpretation, opinion, or information, and you can read the rest of that, the request will be referred to the town manager, town management team, or the mayor. So that would be, I think, the response to the vice mayor's question. Any other thoughts about that section?
Well, I had, had some thoughts about that, because at times, when, for example, in the case of an emergency, and for example, in the fires. So I came to the community center, and residents were there looking for information, of course, because everyone was concerned about the fire, and, you know, I was very careful. I sought out the town manager to find out what is the status, and I also spoke with the sheriff, Sergeant Hallman, about, you know, what, what his perception of, you know, it, it had to do with whether or not the fire had jumped the Silverado Trail. And fortunately, the sheriff offered to go and check right then, which he did, and then came back, and then I felt comfortable responding to the question happily that it had not jumped the Silverado Trail. So I think that in times like that, certain things, you know, I, I don't think it's clear. I don't want to have to say to someone who's seeking help, well, I'm sorry, I can't tell you anything.
The danger is, in that same scenario, social media reports were completely inaccurate, and giving bad information is, in some cases, worse than giving no information. I think, generally speaking, we're talking about-
Yes, you are.
-conditions that are a little bit more typical, but certainly in emergencies, there is a reason that there is a communication plan in place.
Well, is the-
And if we had five council members hearing five different things and reporting out, and they're inconsistent, that could create more of a problem than, than help.
Well, would it be possible, then, in the protocol, to lay out the, the, the way in which council members can receive the, the proper information in a timely manner in case they are the ones at a particular location where people are seeking help? at a particular location where people are seeking help?
I believe that's in place already and in the same scenario as whether it was the earthquake or the wildfires, that process played out where the town manager distributed information as soon as it became available from the sheriff's department or Cal Fire.
I think there's two issues and I, if I'm hearing part of the conversation, because I do think the process is there and the process also has the council receiving all of the official communication.
I don't think you're-
So, oh, I'm sorry. So, I think the secondary question, if I'm understanding, I think the Vice Mayor's question, the, "When reporters seek information that requires interpretation and opinion or information that is not generally available," that may need to be rewritten a little because I think the intent there is that, one, there's the official town statement and then there's the individual opinion of a council member. So, I may work with, work on coming with a little tighter because, in general, the protocols require that the council expresses the end outcome. So, if there's a three-two vote, the policy is X. The town has adopted X and this is what we're doing. And then, so, let me take a stab with Gary at that. I do think that might, because opinion is in there and you all have your right to your individual opinion, but there is what is the adopted, in this particular case, what we're trying to refer. And it even took us some challenging conversation to figure out in today's environment, it's not just a press release because we're issuing a lot of stuff, social media. We're trying to be more informative. We're including things like Nixel alerts. We're including more information that goes out on Nextdoor, Facebook. So, we came up with the term official communications from the town and some of that, in most cases, it is required to go through the town manager's office for review. And then you get into, and this is what we're finding, a lot of the conversation goes to in an emergency. And maybe we should put in an emergency section in there just to emphasize that, if I'm understanding, what I think might be the council's questions.
Thank you. I think that would help because it would be clearer.
One other section that I remember was discussed by the council has to do with voting. I'm looking for the specific section, nine point five, council voting and related items.
Page thirty-two.
Thank you. And that has to do with, in particular, I believe it was motivated by the use of abstention and how it's counted and if it goes toward a quorum or a majority vote and how that all plays out. So, if we could move to that section, I think we're all clear on motions and substitute motions and the order of that. That's just prior to that duty to vote on page thirty-two, nine point five point nine. There is some new text in there, but I also think we should review what it means if there is an abstention, reasoning that needs to be given for an abstention and what that means to the final vote. I believe that's on the bottom of thirty-two and the top of thirty-three. Gary, did you want to possibly touch on that section so that it's clear? What is the impact of an abstention to a majority or quorum, those types of things?
Yeah, that's right. And I'm happy to expand on these sections too. I know that the vote tallying and figuring out what the action was can sometimes be complicated. Tried to encapsulate that in these additions here. The short answer is, when a council member abstains, you're still counted towards the quorum for purposes of determining how many folks are there for the vote to go forward. There are a few things that always require a majority vote of the council, ordinances, resolutions, spending money. Other things, though, like use permits and approvals and other entitlements, don't require automatically three out of five out of state law. So, for things like that, it is possible, if you had a council member absent or a council member disqualified because of a conflict of interest, that two council members could approve a particular item going forward. If you had two in support, one opposed and one abstaining, and only four for purposes of the quorum. So, it's in those unusual circumstances where it's possible that an abstention could lead to a lower vote count than the council is expecting to approve a particular item. If the council would like, we can include additional language on explaining the basis of an abstention or providing an opportunity when that comes up during a meeting to encourage a council member to do so.
Is it not the case, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Is it not the case that the abstention sort of equals a no vote in a way? No?
No. It's just no vote recorded.
No vote recorded.
But you are counted towards the quorum for purposes of determining how many votes are required to pass a particular item.
There would be, and believe me, the ad hoc committee went through, I think, every mathematical possibility of this section with five voting members, a two-two vote with one abstention does not pass.
Correct.
Because it would need three votes with five voting members.
That's right.
And that might speak to your point that it could, in effect, be a no vote.
In effect.
Because you would need three out of those five.
Yes.
But if you had four members in your scenario or even three members voting, I know we drilled down on that, if three members voted and one abstained, it could still pass with two affirmative votes, but if it was a one-one tie, it would not.
Correct. Yes. And a two-two vote under the circumstance where one is abstaining, it's as if the council took no action at all. So, it's not a no. So, if there was an item that came forth and the one abstention and a two-two, it'd be as if the council didn't take any action at all on that item.
So, an applicant would not have to reapply for a particular application, a permit amendment, whatever it might be. There would just need to be, what, a reconsideration of the item at a future date?
Yes, if the council wanted to or not. It'd be as if the council refused to take up the item, which could run into issues under the zoning code because certain applications have to be decided up or down within a certain number of regular meetings. There's, could also be issues under state law under the Permit Streamlining Act and other things that require action within a certain period of time. So, in those circumstances, I would certainly let the council know.
That's why you're here.
Yeah.
Councilmember Moller?
So, to the point of abstention, it is, and we discuss it above, quite different than not participating because of a conflict of interest. It's actually a vote that would come from a council member in terms of abstaining and we have that on our little voting block too.
Yep.
Is there any need or to have any definitions or qualifiers around abstaining? I do see this sometimes on other boards that we sit on and other committees that people are confused about kind of what that generally means. Is there a general definition that would help people or should we, or it should be a totally independent, self-guided decision to abstain?
So, I've seen it both ways. I think this council has adopted the Rosenberg's rules.
Correct.
Which I don't think speaks to this. The purpose of the more modern rules is to streamline the whole system and to remove all the complication of British parliamentary procedure, which can be very long and confusing. And so, the more streamlined rules that are more modern don't delve into this type of stuff. But, should the council wish to do so, that can be included in these. I mean, these protocols are the council's, how you guys are going to conduct your meetings, that can include things like definitions and that might help guide when a council member uses that or not. So, we can include a definition. Generally, I think an abstention is a personal decision not to participate.
And is that how you would describe it?
Yeah, that's how I would describe it. Yeah. It's a decision, I mean, ultimately, the council members are deciding how to vote on a particular item and an abstention is saying, "I choose not to participate in this vote," essentially.
Even though they've sat here for two hours and listened to all the presentations and all the staff report and all the public comments.
Correct.
And participated in the question and answers.
Yep. Just choosing not to participate in the vote.
But there is no law that precludes doing that?
Nope. Each council member essentially votes your conscience. There's no requirement that you be here either. If you miss too many meetings, though, there can be consequences.
I think this came from a concern that having a difficult decision and deciding not to make a decision, that's challenging for some to understand the use of abstention in that case, different than conflicts of interest.
Right.
Conflict of interest, the definition is easier to clarify, financial or otherwise having a conflict, but then you don't participate in the entire conversation either. So, yes, it's the, every individual council member's legal right to abstain at any time for their own reasons and then it's about whether that's fulfilling the duty of the position and the fairness of the application.
Yep.
So, is there an interest in having an attempt at a definition? I think the definition's still pretty vague, frankly.
It is. Right.
But we can add that sentence in there if it helps.
I think it helps.
As do I.
Okay.
Okay.
So, that would be in the nine point five point nine duty to vote section?
Correct.
Gary, we'll leave that language up to you.
Yes.
I'm going to start clarifying in a moment.
Yeah.
Are there any other sections that the council would like to ask questions about or comment about?
I didn't see anything else that I thought needed clarification, but thank you for the two that we have looked at. Thank you.
Councilwoman Doran, anything in particular?
It's very helpful. It's very thorough.
Councilmember Moller, you better not have any more questions. We've gone through this a lot.
We have definitely gone through this a lot and I guess, you know, I'd say, you know, we'll probably wait till all five of us are ready for a final vote, but just because we approve it doesn't mean that we're not going to look at it again in the future. So-
Of course.
Things change, so.
I do think we found in our work that there's quite a bit of language that's just outdated. It just happens to have not been updated in a long time and we needed to clarify and in some cases eliminate. And also, there were some inconsistencies. That was the most challenging part, so I think that's much better now.
Mayor, while we have everybody, I'd like them to take a look at fourteen, which is a new section called-
What page are we looking at?
Page fourteen, item six, local government advocacy. This, again, was a significant discussion point and we're just trying to make sure if this makes sense to all of you and if it does, that's fine and if it's something we need to refine, we want to work on that. But this is a new section to try to better characterize the advocacy aspect short of, because there was some discussion of like a legislative committee, something like that, and we sort of worked our way out of that conversation back to a simpler advocacy platform.
Practice has been that when time allows, any one of us that has something that falls into this category, we bring it to the council for consideration and ultimate approval. There are some issues that don't allow that based on timing.
Right.
Bills move very quickly sometimes and to send letters of support or opposition are very time sensitive.
And I would agree and part of this reinforces that, you know, if we have a stated position on something, then that gives flexibility to either myself or the mayor to pen a letter and then there are certain things, we certainly don't know where the direction of the council is. And those, unfortunately, if there's a timeliness issue, we still need to bring it back and get confirmation from the council on whether to proceed with that or not.
But there is the right, again, getting back to free speech of individual council members, any council member can lobby a legislator in session, what their individual opinion is, just have to make sure that it's not being represented as something that's official for the entire council.
And we've done that on case and we usually try to help people make sure that their word choice is, I'm writing as, as opposed to, "The town of Yountville would like to have you consider." Important distinction from a, because when we use the word "the town," that's representing an official position of you all as the council with adopted policy.
Great. Any comment?
I would like to say that I'm glad to see this because I think that in the, what we have learned is that there are a lot of issues in Sacramento that we are asked to advocate for or against and so I'm glad to have this added. Thank you.
Any member of the public, if we haven't put you in a coma yet? Seeing none. So, we will continue this conversation when we have the Vice Mayor back present. There's nothing too timely about this, ironically. So, Michelle, did you need anything further from us tonight?
No, just with one comment in response to the town manager making his comments about local government advocacy, I think we could include a paragraph maybe stating that the council can make comments or opinions on legislation personally, but make sure it's clarified that it's not on behalf of the town. I think that's silent in here, so maybe that addition is a good clarification to add to that section.
Good idea.
Okay.
Okay, very good.
And also, local issues too, because that certainly has come up in terms of, you know, ballot measures locally in Napa County, one of us will choose to support it and one will be against it.
That's a point.
So, maybe just the word "local" and California legislative would handle the same thing.
Whatever you find to be the most all-encompassing.
We can do that and actually, Councilmember Moller, you're correct. The earlier preface is, we've taken a very narrow range and the council policy is, we don't stray into things like nuclear freeze zones and things like that, which some communities do. I'm just saying ours generally is, if it affects our ability to manage Yountville, then that's something you weigh in. So, typically, it's much heavier on state legislative aspects and a narrow range of federal.
Great. Thank you. So, a date uncertain, we will continue this.
Date uncertain, yes.
Well, we're not a hundred percent sure about that, so it's uncertain for now.
Okay.
That might be the date. Okay. So, we'll go ahead and move ahead since we do have a few more minutes before our six o'clock public hearing. Are there any staff informational reports to hear?
No.
Thank you. The next item would be council meeting reports, comments, agenda item requests. Any council, I know that we've had some policy committee meetings with the league. Is there anything you wanted to report out on that, Councilwoman Doran-Decker?
Not at this time. I think after this week, I'll have other reports to add.
Oh, sure. Several of us are going down to the league, mayors and council members, it's called either the Executive Forum or the Leadership Academy, whatever it's called, and then also I'll be down for the Board of Directors meeting. So, we'll be having conversations about ongoing legislative activity and the governor's budget, among other things. Councilmember Moller, do you have any report?
Most of the environmental quality topics, again, revolve around waste and recycling. It's going to be, one of the things that we're going to talk about next Monday at our Upper Valley Waste Management Meeting, Cal Recycle is coming down to talk to us about, you know, getting, well, the big one that they're going to talk to us about is organics recycling. We are anticipating when this comes on board in 2021 that waste and recycling charges are going to go up for everybody because we are going to try to keep a hundred percent of our organics out of our, what we all know as our brown toders and put them in the green. So, that's going to be quite challenging, how we go about that and implement that and it will, we have to also ensure Cal Recycle that we're actually doing it, hence, you've heard me mention before, the garbage police. So, that and the issue about the lack of recycling markets in China and there was, the state has said they are, will try to find some private entities to take over those recycling markets. I personally find that very challenging, how they're going to either take those over or start preventing the types of plastics that we can't get rid of from even coming into our homes every day. from even coming into our homes every day. So, we have some very, very challenging environmental aspects, new regulations that are coming. You'll hear a lot more about in the future. So, just, but I was very happy to see in the governor's May revised budget, as the mayor mentioned earlier, there's going to be, there's at least a mention of affordable workforce housing on excess state land. So, very relevant to the town of Yountville, so good job, mayor.
Also, one comment to piggyback on Councilmember Mueller's comment is also the bill that's going through that all of the hotels will have to get rid of plastic, miniature plastic bottles over the next year. So that's going to have a huge impact on Yountville as well, in my opinion, for the better in terms of moving that forward as well.
I agree.
As part of the U.S. Conference of Mayors that I'll be attending in about two and a half weeks, one day before that conference starts is a mayor's, climate mayor's summit. And there are about eight different breakout sessions that are going to be addressing various climate issues in cities around the country. So, I think that'll be an opportunity to bring back some new perspectives that might be applicable locally. As it relates to our Yountville Elementary School, I did have a conversation this morning with the superintendent, Dr. Masetti, and appreciated her candor about the financial situation of the district and its impacts potentially on Yountville Elementary School. We've talked about this before. Appreciate the vice mayor having gone there to represent us. I think Councilwoman Doran Becker and I have talked about leaving as soon as we finish our public hearing to go down there. Tonight is more of an informational meeting. Last Thursday, their Board of Trustees did meet and heard the first reading of their budget. This coming Thursday, they are going to potentially adopt that budget. In that budget, there are assumptions, I believe is what the superintendent called them, that allow it to be at least close to balanced on paper. And those assumptions will be discussed at the Board of Trustees meeting Thursday. If they determine that it, those assumptions include closure of one or all of the small schools under 300 enrollment, they will establish what they call a 7-11 committee that will be appointed by the superintendent that will then evaluate the four schools, the viability as it relates to the size of the school, the costs, which could be upwards of $1 million to operate an individual school, a list of criteria they will be putting in place to evaluate the four campuses. I would like to believe that we have some positive, you know, news coming from this. It doesn't feel that way yet. We've been at this juncture with the district a few times in the last decade, unfortunately, because our school is such a strong performing school with great student-teacher ratios and programming. The town is fully engaged before and after school, summer programming, et cetera. So, we will do our best to continue to advocate on behalf of Yountville Elementary School, knowing there are some very serious financial conditions that the district has to look at. They need to avoid going into state receivership, and they are dangerously close to the 3% of reserve fund balances, which would trigger that occurrence. So, we will be going and advocating, and we'll see what comes of tonight's meeting. It's more informal where the district is going to spell out their financial situation. The board meeting on the 20th, and then as the, assuming the 7-11 committee is formed, how that moves forward and evaluates the various schools will be of great interest to all of us. There will be a lot to report out after this week, since we do have a lot of League of California Cities activity this week. So, we will do that. I'm not going to try to keep talking for 15 more minutes.
I have an announcement.
Yes, Councilwoman Mueller.
I would like to officially announce that Fourth of July fireworks were on this year. They're going to be in the same spot. And also, the Veterans Home has traditionally had booths and different activities for the kids. This year, they decided that they would have a picnic for the home members and their family up at their picnic grounds. So it's more of a private, internal activity instead of what they've always done in the past. But that does not diminish that we will forge ahead with fireworks, same time, same place.
Thank you. I did want to touch base, and I meant to do it after you mentioned the governor's budget. I had a, what I considered a very productive and positive meeting with members of the Department of General Services and Housing and Community Development, as well as CalVet regarding housing statewide, in particular, housing here at the Veterans Home. And so, to get members of General Services and Housing and Community Development to come here, the undersecretary of CalVet all came here to the vet's home, and we toured the property looking at specific areas of most interest for potential development. That was very encouraging. And to hear, in a previous meeting, there was a cabinet member from the governor's office. So, everyone in Sacramento is taking this very seriously, not just for us here in Yountville, but statewide. There are some great resources being put toward housing development, and we have a great concept that is getting some legitimate attention. It's only been three or so years of badgering, but hopefully that's going to move forward quickly. They're going to announce in July, the Department of General Services will announce, related to the governor's executive order on state-owned excess property that is viable for housing development. They reviewed over 40,000 parcels that are owned by the state throughout California. They originally narrowed it down to something over 600 that are viable for housing development. They're going to release approximately 150 sites in July that they will then scrutinize for viability. And they'll be, that'll happen in July. By September, they're committed to putting out requests for proposals for actual development and partnering with the governor and his budget. And I'm hearing good things about us being a top priority site because of the circumstances we have here at the Veterans Home and the town. I appreciate the council's support to put forward that feasibility study money that allows us to move very quickly if we are able to do that. So, that's the last thing I have to say for now. I don't think we have any other action until our public hearing. So I'll go ahead and, we'll recess until, let's see, we have 11 minutes. We will reconvene here right at 6 o'clock exactly for our public hearing on the Jessup Sellers Use Permit Amendment, item 8A. So, until then, we'll stand and recess. Five folks, so I will go ahead and reconvene our meeting for the one remaining item, which is item 8A, Jessup Sellers Use Permit Amendment. So it will be a public hearing. We'll start with the staff report and then move on to the hearing.
All right. Good evening, mayor and council. Tonight before you is an application from Jessup Sellers to extend the closing hours of operation from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. Having been originally granted approval in 2003, Jessup Sellers is one of the original tasting rooms in Yountville, conducting tastings and also serving as an art gallery. Since its approval in 2004, Jessup's use permit has been amended several times. And I'll summarize those briefly here, but the copies are attached to your staff report. In 2008, the town council approved a resolution which allowed Jessup Sellers to expand their tasting room into the former gallery space next door and also to install new signage. In 2015, the town council approved a resolution to allow the conversion of a 318-square-foot detached residential unit into a private tasting room. Now recently, in 2018, the town council approved a resolution to allow for wine tasting service for 16 seats and guests within the outdoor patio space along Washington Street. Tonight, the applicant is applying to amend the current use permit condition to extend the hours of operation past 6:00 p.m. so that it may conduct wine tastings indoors until 9:00 p.m. Outdoor hours of operation for the front patio will remain unchanged. As highlighted in your staff report, the business's current hours of operation are as follows. Office hours, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Tasting room and retail hours, 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. And special event hours are from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Now, in addition, provided with your staff report are the potential impacts and mitigation measures associated with the request to extend the hours of operation. And we'll just briefly go through those, starting with staffing and seat count. The applicant states that no additional staffing will be needed as a result of extending the hours of operation. To accommodate the additional shift change, the applicant indicates it will transfer employees from shift to shift simply on a need basis. Furthermore, no additional seats are proposed under this application. Making our way to employee parking. Jessup Sellers is currently enrolled in the Employee Parking Management Program. Employees are required to park in the following approved parking spaces. Five spaces located in the business's parking lot at the rear of the parcel, and five on-street spaces located at Yountville Community Park. I would like to note that staff does conduct regular inspections of all businesses enrolled in this program. By directing employees to park at off-site overflow locations, remaining on-street parking remains available to guests. In addition, the applicant also submits an employee payroll report each month to verify the number of approved employees. Finally, finishing with noise. No noise impacts are expected to take place. No change in use or hours are being proposed for the outdoor front patio area. The patio will continue to operate until 6:00 p.m. for the majority of the year, but until dusk during the winter months, when it may get dark before 6:00 p.m. There are several other tasting rooms and restaurants located in close proximity to Jessup Sellers. They are as follows. Stewart Sellers, Gerard Restoration Hardware, Maison Rie, and Chichios. Each of these businesses operates into the following, excuse me. Each of these businesses operate well into the evening hours past 6:00 p.m. Those particular hours of operation are highlighted within your staff report. Staff is supportive of this use permit amendment. The use conforms to the zoning ordinance. The change in hours is not expected to generate any greater impacts. The hours are similar to other businesses within the district, and the business already participates in both the Employee Parking Management Program and the annual use permit monitoring program as well. With that, that concludes my staff report this evening, pretty short and sweet. And the representative of Jessup Sellers is here this evening, Tracy.
Thank you. Questions in the staff report? Councilwoman Durham.
Have there been any complaints, or what's been the outcome? Have there been any negative outcomes of the use permit monitoring meetings in the past?
In the past, one point of emphasis and focus has been employee parking management. We have seen a very positive success rate for both Jessup Sellers as well as the surrounding businesses.
And just to clarify, the Employee Parking Management Plan for Jessup Sellers calls for their employees to park on property.
Correct. There are five dedicated spaces at the rear parking lot. Once that reaches capacity, they have five overflow parking spaces at Yountville Community Park, and we do see permit tags at the park as well.
And to further your comment there, we can track them because they're part of the Employee Parking Management Plan that has them with tags that are specifically tied to their property, correct?
Exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Doran Becker.
Hi, yes, hello, Curtis. So, have there been noise complaints? I know that there are concerts and things at Jessup Sellers. Have there been noise complaints about those that you're aware of?
Not that I'm aware of.
Good, thank you.
Sandra, quietly, you're shaking your head no. Trying to leave Curtis in charge, but, okay. Councilwoman Mueller.
You mentioned that they're not asking for any change in the outdoors, which is 6:00 p.m. or dusk in wintertime.
Exactly.
Which occurs earlier. And I really appreciate you putting all the other neighboring hours on there so I didn't have to look them up. But one thing I didn't see was for Gerard. They don't have, you don't have any outdoor hours?
Let me reference the staff report.
You happen to just know off the top of your head?
I think that's.
Just kind of curious to kind of.
The special events count, I think, is not meant to be 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. That's, my guess is, that's meant to be.
When Gerard was permitted, it didn't specifically assign outdoor hours of operation, so it's more generally included as part of the overall use. And as the mayor notes, within those categories that are already selected. We didn't call it out specifically noting "outdoor" because it's not specifically approved. Or it's not, it was at a time when it was understood and approved, but not spelled out as a condition.
We weren't differentiating between indoor and outdoor when Gerard got its permit.
Mm-hmm. That's it.
So they can serve outdoors till 8:00? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Till 8:00, yes.
Okay, all right. So everything's kind of consistent. All right, those are my questions.
Thank you. I don't have any questions at this point. I'll open the public hearing, invite our applicant to come forward.
Hello. Hope you guys aren't sick of me yet. Thank you, Mayor Dunbar, and council members. My name is Tracy McCardle, and I'm the general manager for the Good Life Wine Collective, which includes Jessup Sellers and handwritten wines. I'm here today to request an extension to our Jessup Sellers tasting room hours from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. And I sincerely appreciate your consideration for this request. Before I begin, I want to make just a couple of comments regarding the timing of this request and the sensitivity around the recent approval of buy-the-bottle and by-the-glass wine sales. I want you to know that this request is completely unrelated to that approval. We wanted to request this modification a while back, but we did have to wait the year since our last modification. And so that's why this timing is happening right now. The Jessup Sellers tasting room hours were set at the time of our original use permit approval, which was in 2003, which was more than 16 years ago. And the hours have not been modified since. So this request is really to make our hours more equitable to the hours that have been established by our surrounding businesses and tasting rooms. And we're not asking to go any later. I want to assure you that extending our tasting room hours will absolutely not change the model of our business. Our objective, again, is to sell wine and convert wine clubs. And we continue to do so with our high-touch, experientially-driven wine tasting experiences. This modification, we hope, will also improve our Yountville Hotel and B&amp;B relationships. We really want to cater to those guests that are staying at the hotels and are hoping to have a wine tasting experience before their dinner. And we feel like it's a really important part of our referral and outreach strategy. So, I know that we've talked about the potential impacts, but just briefly, three impacts to talk about is parking. And so we really feel that there's not going to be an impact to parking because, again, we're targeting those guests that are already staying in town. Also, too, we would invite any of our guests that are tasting in the later afternoon, if they're going on to dinner, to keep their car parked in our lot. That way, we can help mitigate some of the parking issues that happen in the late afternoon and early evening. Staffing, so our staffing levels would not change. Again, Curtis spoke to this a little bit earlier. We would simply create shifts, and then we would transfer employees in various shifts based on need. And lastly, noise. So we would operate as we would during normal hours of business, and we would also be willing to make any necessary changes upon request. The outdoor patio would not change in terms of hours. So, closing at 6:00 p.m. or dusk would eliminate any additional outdoor noise after dark. Again, thank you so much for your consideration to extend these hours, and I invite you to ask any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the applicant? Councilwoman Durham.
So just to emphasize, because we do like to talk about parking.
Yep.
You're adding 21 hours a week to your business, correct?
Correct.
And so you're saying that with your scheduling, 21 hours a week will not add extra employees?
Correct.
Can you explain that to us just a little bit more?
Yeah, of course. So essentially, we would, we have three shifts as it stands today. So those shifts would just get extended a little bit further than we have right now. So, we have a shift that comes on at 9:00 o'clock, a shift that comes on at. So we have a shift that comes on at nine o'clock, a shift that comes on at ten o'clock, and then one at ten thirty. So essentially, we would still have that nine o'clock shift, of course, but then perhaps not have the next shift start until ten thirty, and then the one after that potentially not till eleven thirty. And then we would just make adjustments based on need, based on the tasting schedule. But no, they're one hundred percent is not, we would not add new staff. Can't do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions of the applicant? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Members of the public. I have to believe some of you are here for this because you've sat through everything else. I did, yeah. I did open it just before the applicant spoke, yeah.
Whitney Diver McAvoy with the Yountville Chamber of Commerce. Good evening, Mayor, council members. I heard this started at six, so I played my cards right and came a little bit later. So first of all, thank you so much for hearing this item today. I know this is a special meeting, and I appreciate you taking this into consideration for approval. Jessup Sellers and the Good Life Wine Collective is one of our model businesses in Yountville. I think we all know that. And I appreciate staff for putting together such a thorough report and including the operating hours of the businesses that are next to and adjacent to Jessup Sellers, which I believe this nine PM timeframe falls into what our other businesses are capable of doing currently. So I'm excited for this change for Jessup Sellers, and I thank you for your support.
Thank you. Any other members of the public like to speak on this item?
I'm not so excited about it. We have two properties that will be-
If you could just, for the record.
Charlie Canolakis. I live at six seven four nine Jefferson Street. And we have two properties that might be impacted by what's going on by this resolution. It's two one four two Pedroni Street, which is two doors away from Jessup Sellers, and our home, six seven four nine Jefferson Street, the backyard of which faces Jessup Sellers. Now, on the noise side, anything that happens in Jessup Sellers parking lot is reflected off their building back into our properties. And we have no complaints with the six o'clock closing because basically it's just the sounds of Yountville. But beyond six o'clock, when people are in their backyards having dinner and so forth, I think it'll be a bit of a nuisance. So I would request that you actually vote against this extension. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to comment on tonight's item? Anyone? Last chance. Okay, I'll close the public hearing and invite discussion by council. Would anyone like to start? Councilmember Mueller.
I'll start with a question for Sandra. So based on our public comment, which was about noise, what expectations do you have with this being open later that could generate more noise? I did hear a comment about leaving cars there and coming back. I don't know, do cars, noise, starting up late at night affect any of those properties to any extent? And do we have any provisional measurements upon approval about seeing what kind of impacts it might have on the neighbors? Could you address those items for us?
Well, of course, all uses in town are subject to the noise ordinance that establishes time periods for noise. And those are generally daytime noise hours that are eight or nine, depending on daylight savings time at night and when it transitions to a lower period of time. In this case, the proposed extension of use is for indoors, so we don't expect indoor noise to be an issue. However, there's always opportunity that noise from their music series travels outside windows, and there is noise associated with cars. However, when we receive complaints from the public, it's generally employee noise when going to their cars rather than the public. And of course, we'd have both in this case. Current hours are that they close at six, but we haven't received any noise complaints from the public for this business or for other businesses in the area. And we know that Stewart Sellers has their outdoor area that's open and used until dusk as well. And there are other noise concerns. So we haven't really, we don't have a demonstrated noise problem out there, and all uses are subject to the noise ordinance.
So one follow-on question, I was just going to look. So Stewart Sellers, which is in the same proximity, it says seven thirty AM to dark. So does dark mean nine o'clock in the summertime? What does that mean? That's why I was asking about Gerard as well, because they can pour out, it's across the street, of course, but... So can you explain that dark word a little bit more?
So that was the term that used to be included in permits, and it's not specific. Dusk is more specific. That's a half an hour between, within which the sun goes down.
But in the summertime, it's going to be-
And it varies, of course, yeah. Summertime, it's before five, I mean, wintertime, it's before five, and the summer, it can be as late as nine, yes. Still light at that.
What I'm trying to get at, unless you tell me otherwise, it seems like there's already people who might be out in the Stewart area till dark, dusk, maybe nine o'clock, just to speculate. Is that, because they're open till ten PM?
That's accurate, yes, yes.
So is that, that's kind of ongoing now because it's permissible, correct?
Yes. And I raise that because we haven't received any complaints, and that area is being used. That area has been being used for-
We're talking about Stewart Sellers now?
At Stewart Sellers, for more than wine tasting, they've been doing, or they have been doing wine tasting outdoors, service wine tasting for at least the last six months. I can't recall when we brought that to you, the latest set of amendments. Maybe that was a year ago, and we haven't, it didn't lead to an uptick in complaints at all.
Also, I just point out, in that general proximity, we also have the Pontius parking lot activity and the taco truck. So there is a, we haven't had a lot of noise complaints in general about the truck either. And I know we did do some work to try to cite location and make sure the generator impacts, but all of those are in that proximal. And I would also point out, that's one of the reasons the town council adopted a new standard for masonry walls as opposed to wood walls, was to try to help be a better neighbor in those areas.
What's the hour of operation for the truck?
Ten o'clock.
In the summertime.
Is that late?
Yeah.
I don't know that one.
I know that because I have picked up food at that time.
Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Okay. Councilor Doran Becker.
I do have one. So I understand that there are five parking spots for employees in the back behind Jessup. How many parking spots are there in total?
I believe it's a fifteen-space parking lot. It's a thirteen-space parking lot that we have the two tandem spaces behind.
Okay. And is that the largest parking lot of any of the businesses along that eastern side of the street?
No, Stewart has more. I'm pretty sure.
And...
I think they have thirteen at Stewart.
Okay.
Immediately next door.
Okay. So that's very equivalent.
Actually, maybe even deeper.
And then there's some tandem stalls at the back also.
There are two.
So a total of fifteen in that lot.
I see.
With the two tandem.
And the trash enclosed.
All right, thank you for your help.
Councilor Durham, did you have any questions?
No questions.
Okay, we can get on to comments.
Yep.
You want to start?
Sure.
Or continue?
I highly, I respect the public comments that were made about noise, and at the same time, I respect Jessup Sellers and the neighbor that they've been. I would like to believe that as we move forward, any complaints would be seriously taken. And I understand the concerns. I'd like to believe that you're going to be packed every night at every seat from six to nine, but I don't think that's going to be the reality. And I do believe that at the business side of it, that it is definitely a Yountville Hotel and B&amp;B benefit to those who are not going to be parking their cars there as well. So with that said, I can support this change to nine PM.
Thank you. Councilor Doran Becker.
Yes, I would like to ask that they, the management at Jessup would instruct their employees, as they're leaving, to be quiet. Otherwise, you know, it really levels the field for all of the businesses in that area. So I am inclined to permit it as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Mueller.
This was an issue for, you know, the council years and years ago when we were talking about the east side of Washington, and this is. And there were, and that's why at one time we restricted everything to local serving businesses only, you know? So they would kind of come and go, and we wouldn't have any noise. But over the years, we just really did not see any of those impacts come up. And even, we have a winery at the, I guess, the south end of town. I'm not even sure where the south and the north, where is that? Is that like Pedronia? Who knows, anyway? So we just really haven't seen, and it has been a very, very big concern for the council over the years. So I think as long as we really monitor this closely, if we see any problems, I definitely want to hear about it, you know? Maybe they just, might go to the police, but I'm sure you would get updates from that. So I will monitor it closely. I'll approve it tonight, but I, you know, I do have a lot of sensitivity for our residents, and maybe what people think is going to happen maybe really doesn't happen. It's the leaf blowers, every day, morning to night. You know, those are the ones that really kind of drive me crazy. But anyway, off-topic, I will approve it as well.
Thank you. This is very easy for me. You've checked off more boxes than I would have required, frankly. Already being in the parking management program, I mean, virtually everything that we could think of to question you on, you're already doing, and doing it very respectfully. I understand the concern about what might happen. But, I mean, my neighbors make more noise than businesses that I am impacted by. I think this is a long overdue. I couldn't believe it's been since two thousand and three, you've been having to close at six. I mean, it's just very old, the way we used to do business. And it doesn't make any sense to me that we are restricting this one business out of all of those businesses especially to the burdensome early closure. We've seen no reportable impacts from Stewart Sellers. As was mentioned, the other commercial uses immediately adjacent and across the street probably have the potential for making more noise than a couple employees leaving at nine o'clock. So I can easily and completely support this idea. I also appreciate the respect that you've shown us with actually following your rules, as frustrating as that might have been for these many years. Not all businesses do that. Some decide they're just going to do their own thing, and being fined is the cost of doing business. And the Good Life Wine Collective has been upfront and honorable all the way. So I completely trust that you will be respectful with your neighbors, both businesses and residents. So it's an easy yes for me. So if there's no additional comment, is there an action to be had by any of the council?
I'll make a motion that we adopt resolution number nineteen dash three five six four, approving a use permit amendment to extend the closing hours of operation from six PM to nine PM for Jessup Sellers located at sixty-seven twenty and sixty-seven forty Washington Street, APN zero three six, zero three three, zero one three, zero zero zero.
Second.
Thank you, motion and second. Please cast your vote. That passes, that's right, we only have four of us now, so that passes unanimously. Thank you, and congratulations on that request. In the interest of time, we are going to quickly adjourn. I won't even bother with an official motion and second unless you need it, Michelle, to our next regular meeting, Tuesday, July second, at six PM. Thanks, everybody.